Hey, Brian.
Hi, guys. Took forever to get logged on. I don't know if it's my internet or what, but.
My Zoom updated and so it's all kind of different.
Oh, that's good, right?
Mr. Hell, do you have that baseball cap on to keep your hair out of your eyes? Is that what's going on here or what?
Yeah, well, I have a track record of non-official commission meetings. I always keep my traditional hat on.
Showing your maple pride right there. I see it. I like it.
Outside of first and third Mondays. Yeah, yeah. How's everything going, brother?
Yeah, it's good. This side of the street is in good shape.
I've been keeping an eye on it, make sure everything's okay.
Yeah, I watch yours too. Shady guys on your side, but.
Yeah, yeah. It's my most fun meeting of the year. Can you tell?
I can see.
Like this meeting. It's interesting to see like the planning down the road. I like that.
I'd like it better if we could do it in an hour.
Maybe we need to put time limits based on. And if depending on how many requests they have, you get like three minutes for each request or something.
Let's just put timeline on everything. Screw it.
Time limits on us talking too.
Yeah.
That probably wouldn't go very well. Working from home this weekend next, and I have not left the house today, but it looks really cold out.
Yeah. No snow, but it's cold.
There's snow up in Gaylord.
Yeah, I seen those posted yikes.
Yeah, they're getting.
Always snow. There's snow in August in Gaylord, Mary.
Sometimes, not not lately, but sometimes. Actually, the the times when it would snow, the snow would still be in places on the ground in July would just be like, you got to be kidding me, like out in the woods and different places there are snowbanks.
Stop and think about how deep that snow was when in the middle of winter.
Yeah. Yep.
Vince always gets to go first. Have you noticed that theme over the last five years? Oh, is he on the call? He's on the call yet, is he? Oh, wait, yeah, he is.
Yeah, I bribed Nathan. It's like winning the department head lottery going first for this.
There you go.
Well, it looks like we're all here and ready to go. It's five o'clock, so. I call the Adrian City Commission Special Meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty to order. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Robin.
There he is.
Present.
Mr. Help. Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry. All commission members present.
All right, moving on to the capital budget discussion, Greg, do you want to? Do you want me to do this where you each person goes or you want to go ahead and take it?
I can take it, but I'm not gonna probably do anything different than you would do, which.
Okay, then I'll do it. That's fine. That's why that's why I wanted to ask, sorry. All right, so we are going to begin with. The capital improvement budget request from the police. So Chief Emmerich, you're up.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Special thanks to Nathan Owen for scheduling the meet first and definitely ahead of Matt. That's that's huge. Thank you, Nathan.
First next year.
My my requests are largely unchanged from last year. With one exception, we were able to get the copier that we had asked for. Our request last year, obviously, as you know, we're we're delayed for COVID wisely so, but we were able to. Bid out and get a copier here. It's supposed to be arriving this week. It'll be replacing one that's more than fifteen years old. So that is that's huge for us. It also came in at two thousand less than we expected, so right around sixty-five hundred. So another thank you to the administrator, to finance department for helping make that happen. My main request last year was the replacement of our patrol rifles. I'll pare down that discussion since most of you will be hearing it again, but essentially the rifles we have are on loan from the government. They're part of the ten thirty-three share program. So our rifles are actually Vietnam era M sixteen's that. Are in good condition. They're serviceable. We train with them. We're proficient. However, there's better stuff out there. There's better weapons available, better sighting systems. And that's that's the reason for the request. So we would like to upgrade what we have and send back those weapons to the Air Force where we got them. Part of that, the ten thirty-three is a very controversial program. It's one that we get a FOIA about every year. Military surplus being shared with law enforcement is a very controversial subject. So if we could extricate ourselves from that, if we could own our own equipment, even better. So that's the request I have. We were looking for one one rifle for each patrol vehicle with two spares for a total of ten rifles. The ammunition training cost, cost of the rifle themselves comes out around twenty-five thousand. So that's the request there. The copy machine that we were able to obtain, my second request is for office furniture. This is one that we put in every three years or so to upgrade what we have. We kind of rotate out the office chairs, the wear and tear on them. Stuff starts to break down. The nature of wearing all the gear around your waist, sitting down, standing up, you know, however many times a day to go to calls. Really breaks down the furniture. So we try to replace that regularly. The the one I made a mistake on the request, number two, the bookcase we already have. I meant to delete that, but we do have a bookcase, so I don't need that. We're mainly replacing the chairs. We'd be buying some more upright desks. And repairs to our countertops, which get nicked and chipped and break down all the time. Those are my two requests for the coming year. Do we just, Mayor, how do you want to handle it? Do you want to just run down through the the coming years after that?
Yes, please. Thank you. Unless there's actually, let's see, does anybody have any questions on what he just went through though before he goes into that? Okay, go ahead, Ben, and go ahead. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We have a large expense that's looming out there with our body camera system. So what we have, we began with in two thousand fifteen. So our cameras, some of them are coming up on five years old. Most of them we've been able to replace as time goes on. There's a shift in the technology in that as years go on, police departments are required to hold on to more and more video. Or we record more video, we maintain more of it. So the server size winds up increasing every year. So the beauty of our current system is that once you buy the cameras, you buy the server. Software came with it. That's it. It's a it's a one-time expense. The nature of what's happening now is all of that data is moving to a cloud because it's a it's a moving target. The the size of the video that you need to store, it's it's constantly growing. So with the cloud-based, what they're doing now, it's kind of like buying office software. You know, you you buy the software and then you pay a license every year or you you pay on top of that. So. The estimate we had been working on, they wouldn't even tell you over the phone. You had to attend a half an hour. PowerPoint session before they would even talk numbers with you because it's that it's that bad. It's that ugly. So the the estimate you'll see there for body worn cameras, that is for the Axon. Company, the Axon product. That's what they use in the county right now. They they very much like the product, however, it is very expensive. So seventy-five thousand. The bad news is that's just the first year. The estimate itself. I I shared with Denise, I shared with Nathan, I I don't think administrator, I had a chance to share with you, timing was such. It's it's ghastly. It's thirty-six thousand a year, every year after that initial investment. So that is to keep up with technology, to keep replacing cameras and to maintain your licensing, maintain your storage space. That's that's the initial estimate. So there's a lot of stuff that can be pared down. There are competitors to talk to. The thing of it is, is I didn't want this to be a surprise when we had to have that conversation. It's like it's like a fire truck or a vactor or anything like that. It's gonna be huge when we when we do it. The good news is, is that our current cameras, most of them are in good shape. We should be fine for the next several years as long as Denise can keep. Keep up with our server space, we should be fine. But down the road, at some point, this is gonna be something we have to do. So I wanted to put that on there for discussion. Twenty-two, twenty-three is not a hard year. We're we're flexible on that, of course, but I just wanted to get that out for discussion. Any questions on that? I know it's a it's a lot to swallow. It's a lot to look at.
Yeah, I have a question. So that is cameras, like that's the cameras, that's the cloud, that's the the system, that's. Is it everything encompassed in that seventy-five thousand? And how many cameras is that? I guess those are some of my questions.
Yeah, and I can I can share that estimate. Mayor, if you want to take a look at it, it's about ten pages. There's a lot of features on there. I guess the it's it's all the hardware, it's all the software. It is the evolving arrangement where, you know, as they come out with new models, you get those. It's a it's a technology. It's kind of like your cell phone, you know, iPhone twelve came out. So I get that as part of my plan. The old ones go and get traded back in. The other part of that, and there's there's many aspects to it, but this is a it's a wireless system. So right now we have. We have a camera that looks like this, and we have to. Plug it in with the USB at the end of our shift, and it uploads slowly. You annotate the videos. Anything new is completely hands-free. There's no cords. So as I back into my parking place, my video is uploading, and it's being annotated with all the notes that dispatch added to that call. So there's a it simplifies a lot of things. But you're you're being charged for each of those things too. So the other part of it is, is that we're constantly. Copying video to flash drives, we're encrypting it and transporting it to the prosecutor's office for cases. If we were to go to a cloud base, we can get the prosecutor on board so that they can log in and get all the video they need from their office on their end, which would save us a lot of headaches on our end. So there's a lot of lot of pieces to the puzzle. There's this this estimate was for thirty-one cameras with. I think they threw in four spares for free, something like that. But there's there's user, yeah, exactly. There's.
For free.
Right. Yeah, there's user licenses and different levels of licensing. So the road officer license costs X, but the administrator license, if you're going to be, you know, copying, saving, using that video, manipulating it. There's tools in there for editing, which currently Michelle does with a third-party software. This would have the ability to blur faces, to omit radio traffic, to take out all that sensitive stuff that she has to do by hand right now.
I've got one question for you related to some information we're gonna get later on the IT budget. There's mention of an up police server on there, and this might be a question for Denise. Is there any duplication here with this police server request in this cloud-based body camera request?
No, the i- if that's what it is, it would be replacing that. So once we do a cloud-based server, she wouldn't have to to maintain so much space for our video.
Okay, so so with that in mind, that we would be, I mean, with a useful life of five years, it's maybe four, maybe three, who knows with computers these days. But but that cost, that request might not, I mean, that wouldn't be a good idea if we're switching to a cloud base next year anyways.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, then that's a question for Denise on priority of of purchases.
Right.
On the server is the only thing on the server is the body cam videos?
Right, we we maintain, and I don't know how many servers it is, but one she just keeps adding to her if it's many. But as the years go on, we just maintain more and more and more video. I mean, anything that's related to a use of force or a complaint against an officer or any open case, we hold that stuff for years. And even setting everything else at the lowest possible retention period, that doesn't drop off enough to keep it so that we we can find a balance.
So that that estimate at the thirty-six thousand per year past that, so like, does it go off of anything like how much space you use in the cloud? Like, like, how how much are, you know, our cameras are actually taking up in the cloud? Can that that is that one of the fluctuating pieces of that? You know, you know, like how you have dad data uses on your phone, like kind of to go along with that. Does it? Does that change the amount? Is that one of the factors?
Yes, I mean, there's a there's a lot that can still be tailored with this. It was significant just to get this far, to get an actual number out of the company and and get it to Nathan in time to be looked at. But with some of these features, for example, you know, you you pay X a month to have the ability to activate anyone's camera remotely at any time. So if if I, as the administrator, if I know everyone's on a call and I want to see what they're doing, I can pull it up on my computer and turn it on without them physically turning it on. So they don't have that ability. I can watch anybody anytime. Live, you know, not not after the fact, not when they come back and upload, then I can watch it. I can watch it as it's happening. But, you know, that the usefulness of that is is pretty limited, actually. So if if it makes sense to to trim that out of the plan and pare down this, then then we can absolutely do that. Same with the storage. You know, that that's a number that I think we would change as as time went on, as we realized what we needed to save and didn't and and had an actual, okay, we we're doing about this much a year. We know we're doing that now. But if if the prosecutor's office then decides to save their own stuff, we don't have to do it anymore. You know, whatever the case may be, that can definitely be tailored. So I apologize. That that was a heavy one there, but definitely something we'll need to look at in the future. I had also put in for twenty-two, twenty-three a building alarm. Excuse me. What we found in the summer's protest. You know, stuff was kind of popping up unplanned, and you know, there would be a spontaneous group that would form in front of our building when all officers were out responding to a call. So as much as I would like to say that there's always an officer in here twenty-four seven, there's there's really not. And depending on when calls pick up around dinnertime to when, you know, traffic slows to no cars on the road at four AM, there's usually not someone in here, and we don't have any type of physical alarm right now. I had had three M come out, an installer, to look at putting a film on the windows to make them shatterproof. There's a number of building improvements that we had looked at based on what we had discovered and dealt with this summer. So that building alarm is one of them, especially since the the vault is there. So we hold about ten thousand pieces of evidence in that vault. And while I don't think anyone would be able to breach it, you know, we'd like to know if someone was trying so that we could get back here to. One of the items on here are building surveillance system. Matt, I'm glad to hear. Is that something that Johnson Controls is looking at as part of our? Upgrade?
Yeah, that'll be included on the project for Johnson Controls.
Yeah, that'll be included on the project for Johnson Controls.
Okay, fantastic, I uh, I'll cross that off then. I'm sorry?
Anything for you.
Yeah, thank you, yes. Now, we uh, we've been operating with uh, the Ionit system, which is, which is good. It's uh, does well with interviews and, and other video inside the building, however, we've wanted to add some cameras and upgrade. But uh, if that's part of the Johnson Controls plan, even better. For twenty-three, twenty-four, then that leaves our upstairs copier. That is a newer model than the one we are replacing downstairs, however, uh, this is service-related. We, we have many calls on this, this is something we've dealt with for years. We were looking at trying to replace both at the same time, obviously, that's, that's pretty expensive, so we're gonna spread that out. The uh, main copier that we use is downstairs, that's the one that we will have delivered this week. If within a few years, twenty-three, twenty-four, we're able to replace the one upstairs, hopefully that bid holds at about sixty-five hundred. And that's what the request would be there. You can see I had entered as eighty-five, I know that's what uh, around about what uh, the new copier costs in City Hall. Ours is uh, a, a little smaller than that, uh, not as many features, but uh, but it would suit our needs fine. So um, I would amend that to sixty-five hundred in, in year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, I had thrown in flooring. Matt and I had talked about some of our stuff is starting to show where the, we have a really thin nap, like factory-type carpeting. In many of the rooms and just the high-traffic areas, it's starting to show where. In four to five years, I can see us starting to, to replace that as, as it gets worn out. A- again, in twenty-five, twenty-six, it's office furniture. I don't know what will be broken that year, but I can guarantee it will be something. So I'd like to uh, put in that placeholder so that we can try to keep what we have uh, nice and functional. Haven't given many tours this year, in fact, I don't think we've given a single one, uh, but normally those, those are pretty popular, we give them almost weekly. So uh, wanna stay on top, keep our building looking nice and our furniture as well. The uh, last item I have in here is twenty-six, twenty-seven, and that is replacement duty weapons. That is a, a moving target, uh, in talking to Springfield, the manufacturer of our weapons, they don't really set a lifespan. Years past, other manufacturers, they would say, you know, fifty thousand rounds or X number years of life. They are such and they, and they are maintained such that, um, until we start to experience a, a failure. Uh, in training or at the range, then um, they don't, they don't, you know. If limited life, I guess, would be what they have to say about that. So I think that they will last well beyond twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, I put that in there as a placeholder, but I don't think we will need to replace them. That's the uh, that's the extent of my request, that's why uh, Nathan lets me go first, it's five-twenty. So I uh, if, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer. And I uh, administrator, would you like me to circulate that Axon bid or send it to you to be circulated?
Appreciate that.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
Well, I'm not hearing any questions to, are we okay to move on? Sure. Alright, well, thank you very much, Chief Emrick, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, have a good evening.
Thank you, moving on, Chief Massengel, we're on to fire, go ahead.
Alright, um, good evening, let me see if I can figure out how to do this. Says I can't share my screen.
Try again, I just switched it on.
You just turned it on, there we go, alright, here we go. Let's see, see if I can do this, I've only done it one other time. We might be sharing my screen, okay, hopefully that's working. So to uh, go over the budget, same with, with Chief Emrick there. A lot of the things that uh, we're gonna cover are carryovers from last year. So um, the ones that are carryovers, I put asterisks by them on the, on the slides. So that way, you know, that they're, they're carryovers and that's how we're, we're trying to do what we were trying to do last year. And, and make those purchases as well as the, the additional purchases. So uh, first one, every year, we budget um, to, to replace about three sets of turnout gear. They, not only do they wear out about every ten years usually, but it's also required uh, by NFA and enforced by MyoShu. That we have to replace our, our gear every ten years. So that's, uh, that was left in the budget this year, uh, this current year, and then we're asking, of course, for it to. In the budget for next year also. So that's the first thing, um, the second thing, this was uh, taken out of the budget from last year. We are required to test, pressure test our hose every year. And every year, when we pressure test our hose, uh, some fails. Some of it is because it's old, some of it is because it's well-used. They get holes, burn holes in them, they get drug around through or nails, that sort of thing, um, and ends up. Either failing or leaking, so we have to make sure we keep up on, on keeping our hose. So we tried to do uh, ten thousand every year. But of course, that was, that was, ten thousand was taken out this year, so we've already had some fail this year that needs replaced. Um, and we're anticipating next year we'll have um, some more to, to replace in addition to what, what we already have out of service for this year. Next, uh, so this was the, a new item that was not in the requested budget for last year. We're requesting to buy an additional thermal, thermal imaging camera. We have two currently, uh, but it's, it's one of those things you can never have enough of, one of those tools. Of course, they're not cheap, so we, we can't buy one every year by any means, uh, but every, every few years, we try to, to purchase one. We have had um, other ones in the past that just as technology and they don't make parts for them anymore. So we, we've replaced them, but this is actually a, uh, would be an addition. And this would give us um, one on each one of our frontline apparatus. Right now, we have the potential to not have one in, in one of the vehicles that we respond in. Uh, one of the, either the engine or the tower, so uh, this would give us that capability. And I, I've got a couple of short videos, um, the first one's short, the second one's even shorter. But for those of you that may not know how these operate or how they work. In a fire, some people are sometimes surprised at how, how dark it is. Inside of a fire, so I've got a video that, that shows uh, how dark it really is inside of it, of a fire. And in a short video that shows how they are uh, what you can actually see with the thermal imaging camera. So this just shows you how extremely dark it is, um, even with this flashlight being turned on. So that's the first video that, that, like I said, just shows how uh, extremely dark it is and, and how hard it is to try and locate either a victim. Or, or a fire, uh, or a down firefighter. When we literally can't see anything. This actually is a video that shows the um, the view through a thermal imaging camera. So if you haven't seen this before, it's, it's a dramatic difference. So the camera actually shows differences in temperatures. So you see on their, their cylinders are a different temperature because they're breathing air out of it. So you're actually seeing the difference in temperature, but as you can see, you can see outlines uh, in shades and different shades. And this is how we would locate a victim. So you can actually, you can't really see through the smoke, but you can see shades and outlines then. And see to, to be able to see the victims. So that's the, the difference of what we can see using, using the thermal imagers.
Eric, I had a question about it, it says fifteen thousand on your slide here, but I do believe in the item request here, it says ten thousand. So I wondered uh, which one it was or which one was correct, I guess.
Okay, so, yeah, actually, it is ten, um, they've actually come down in price. When they first came out, they were about twenty-five thousand dollars, but as the technology and competition. They're, they're running right around ten thousand dollars now, that's a, that's a staple on my.
Awesome, I just wanna check, thank you.
So yeah, so that's the uh, thermal limited camera, so they're, like I said, they're, they're not cheap. But they're, they're extremely valuable when, when we're trying to locate a fire or a victim inside of a fire, so. The next item, and I just went in the, in the order there on the, they are on the list, uh, self-contained breathing apparatus. We've had some, uh, this was on the, in the budget last year. But uh, so we requested or tried to get a grant for them this year, we did not get the grant. For them this year, our plan is, as you know, uh, last meeting, you approved some, to purchase some cylinders for the SCBAs. And so this is the actual SCBs themselves, um, we need, will need to replace some cylinder. No, actually, that, that replaced all the cylinders, uh, but these are the actual harnesses, regulators, masks. Basically, the rest of the unit, um, so they were. Last budget year, we budgeted as if we were gonna get the grant, um, and we did not get the grant. It is something that uh, we're gonna, we're gonna try and go for the grant again this year. If we don't get the grant this year, then it's something we really need to make the purchase. Our current ones are fifteen years old and they're, uh, they have to get what's called flow-tested every year. So basically tested to make sure they're working properly. And um, this year, when they flow-tested up, they said we really need to look at getting some new ones. There are three, what they call NFP life cycles old. And so once you reach that third NFP lifecycle, the technology and, and the new upgrades are, are tremendously different. The low air alarm actually goes off sooner to give you more time to, to get out when you're rerunning low on air. The mask itself actually has a higher temperature and higher quality. Visor that doesn't melt as quickly because there have been firefighters who've been injured and killed when their mask actually melts. So a lot of new upgrades over the last fifteen years that. Not, not including the fact that just, they're fifteen years old and, and they're, they've seen their end of their lifecycle. It's not something we really want to, to have malfunction.
I got questions on this one, man. So last meeting, we approved without bid uh, tanks to go with our breathing apparatus. And now all of a sudden, we're at a point where it looks like we can evaluate. Because our actual, the, the, the hardware that goes with the tanks is up. Why would we have just bought tanks if we're at a point where we can evaluate the whole product? And find the best product to, who might be a different brand?
So uh, two things on that, one, we didn't uh, budget, we only budgeted for the match this year. As opposed to the full replacement, and we actually did um, evaluate the products. And the, the MSA that we have currently is what we consider the best product. And um, it also will let us be um, interchangeable with Madison Township, Adrian Township, Raisin Township, Cambridge Township. So that's why we, we actually did evaluate and say, hey, are we still looking to go with, with MSA? And um, everybody that evaluated agreed, yes, that is where we wanna stay with and stick with.
You made the comment just a minute ago about we could never have enough thermal imagers. Help me understand that, man, because to me, there's only a certain number of trucks. And even then, how often is, does more than one truck end up on a scene and is the first thing you do when you get on the scene? Pull out of your thermal imager or is it put on your gear and then by that time, some other truck is there with a thermal imager? I, I need, I need help understanding why we need so many thermal imagers at ten thousand dollars a unit.
Yeah, so, so you can never have enough, I guess that was kind of a, uh, I mean, yeah, you can have enough, if you have more thermal imagers than people, that doesn't make any sense. But, so having, um, right now, what we do is, we've got a, we've got two, we've got one on um, our lead engine, one on our tower. So our, our lead engine usually responds to every call, our tower doesn't respond to every call, every fire. So there's times where we only end up with one on a fire scene. And there are, so every search crew that goes in, we'd like to have one. Um, and actually, the uh, incident commander, when whoever's in charge on scene, it's, it's. We do what's called a three-sixty, so basically whoever's in charge on a scene, the officer gets off the truck, walks around the entire building. Well, right now, the thermal imager is on the crew going into the building. To where the, the officer in charge can walk around the outside of the building with the thermal imager. If, if we had another one on scene and be able to evaluate where that fire is. Where the, the uh, the most heat is and actually communicate that to the crew that's inside. So if we have more than one crew doing searches, then we, we would need multiple. If we have one crew searching for victims and one crew going in to put out the fire. So, so the victims and the uh, or searching for victims, there's times where we have one crew doing one thing and one crew doing another. So they're doing after things where they both need, uh, and I say need, there's, there's way to do it without it. But it's a whole lot more efficient, if you can see. So having one for the, the um, officer in charge to be able to evaluate and see where the fire's actually progressing to. Or actually going.
Okay, and then what's, so, so along that vein of our mutual support friends that I see that, um, you know, unfortunately, you guys have had a. A decent number of fires of late, I, I mean, how many thermal imagers are they gonna show up with on a scene too? To, to share equipment of this nature? I mean, I see it as, you know, we got thermal imagers at ten thousand dollars, we got turnout gear at ten thousand dollars. And, and I've said this, I think, at every capital budget meeting, is that, man, you, you're playing with the trump card of you're dealing with people's lives on all of this stuff. And I'd like to buy you all of it, but, but I have to be reasonable in terms of, um, you know, prioritizing and putting some of it in perspective. I mean, I'd, I'd buy you six of those if it saved one baby's life because it was stuck in a crib someplace, I'd buy it in a second, but I can't. So, so like, I'm trying to put this into perspective and to weigh this out, and, and it might be a trade-off between a thermal imager and turnout gear. Because turnout gear on a mutual aid doesn't make any sense, I don't wanna drive to Madison to get dressed, to drive to, to Riverside Avenue to put up. turnout gear on a mutual aid doesn't make any sense. I don't want to drive to Madison to get dressed to drive to, to Riverside Avenue to put out a house fire. But if it's gonna take an extra two minutes that somebody's gonna show up from Madison with a thermal imager, you know, that makes some sense to me that maybe we don't need four, five or six of them.
Yeah. And, and like I said, I mean, that, that was probably a misspeak on my part of you can't have too many of them. Would one and everybody.
So what's the sweet, what's the sweet spot, man?
You know, at least one on every truck. There are, there are, and, and that's because like I said, we don't always show up to every call with the same truck. So on, right now on some fires, on commercial and industrial, we show up with the tower and what we call our lead engine. On, on residential, we show up with our, engine one, which is our hydrant truck and our lead engine. So right now we may show up with two, we may show up with one. But so, so the sweets, the sweet spot is to have every crew with one. But you know, as you say, we have mutual aid, they'll show up with one, um, hopefully, assuming. So right now my goal is to have one on every truck. And I say our three lead trucks. So this will give us a.
Are you sending in when you get there? How many teams do you send in?
So it depends. If we have, so what I, what I would consider a full shift, um, seven on duty, then we could have three shifts or three crews of two.
And one circling the outside, checking for the hottest, the hotspot.
Right. So, so say we had confirmed, like it's on a video, confirm that, that there's, there's victims inside. Then we can, uh, then we would have six. Uh, and that's, that's so seven is our maximum staffing, daily staffing. So we would have the incident commander outside and then three crews, three teams of two doing searches. Um, or one during, one trying to put the fire out and two doing search. Um, and then once a fire is knocked down, then they would do search.
How necessary is it to circle the outside and find that hotspot or find the hottest spot while you bring victims out? So you can start cooling the hottest spot.
So that normally that's a, that's an initial thing. So when the, when the incident commander shows up, then he would do his three sixty. And then depending, I mean, if we had an unlimited number, which, which we don't, and, and that wouldn't be what I was asking or I would ask for, but the incident commander could hand thermal imager off to if they had a third crew going in. Once he did his three sixty, then he could hand it off to the next, uh, to the, one of the search crews going in. If not, then it is a, it is a, um, useful tool for the incident commander to be able to watch from the outside using that thermal imager to watch. And as the crew hits it with the water, the, the heat will reduce. So the, the incident commander will actually be able to tell from the outside with a thermal imager, hey, are we making progress on this fire or is it going from the first floor to the second floor? That they're not seeing, or is it, they knocked down the first floor? Uh, which, which we had this happen at, at the Butler Street Fire. They knocked on the first floor, went to the second floor and the first floor started to light back up. These are the kinds of things that, that it could be useful for, or can be useful for, for the incident commander. Uh, but if we're talking life safety, this commander is gonna hand it off to the search crew. Uh, because that's where it's gonna be more, most valuable at that, at that moment. Uh, so it, it, it all varies. It's all dependable on, on the situation. But like I said, to me, the third one, um, is the, is the key. That way we'll, we'll have two on every fire because that will put one on all three of our, our lead apparatus. And then if you look in the future, looking at about five years down the road, um, that'll put our initial one, our, our oldest one at about fifteen years old. So that wouldn't be adding an additional one. That would be replacing the one that, that's be about fifteen years old at that point. Does that answer questions or did I just confuse you?
Pretty imperative that there's one outside watching for escalation and one and a couple inside looking for victims.
So yeah, so that's, that's our preference. I mean, it's like anything else. I mean, we've, we've operated without them. You know, for hundreds of years, but it makes our job a heck of a lot easier. Uh, when you can see what's going on by the heat traces. There's some, I'm not gonna ask for this, but there's some, uh, fire departments that are actually starting to use drones with thermal imagers on them. For that exact reason, they'll sit a drone and just hover the drone over the fire. So they can watch the progress and, and using a drone with a thermal imager, uh, for that exact reason is there's a lot you can do and a lot you can see from the exterior with a thermal imager. That makes it beneficial. So. All right.
So Eric, and this one on the scuba gear, uh, the self, the, the, the gear that you just did, that you're trying to get the grant for, um, I think you call it scuba, um. Um, how many is that for that two hundred and fifty thousand? How many units is that? And also, um, what are you, do you know why you didn't get the grant this year? I mean, do they give you a reason why? And like, what do you think your chances are for that grant? And like, because I mean, this isn't something where we can like phase in, it doesn't sound like a few each year because it looks like we need them all. So I mean, we're really looking at a big ticket item here if we don't get this grant. So I guess that's what I'm just really asking. Um, you know, like, what do you think the chances are for the grant? Do we have any reasoning why? You know, just all of those things.
Right. So this is, this would replace what we have currently, which is twenty-four SCBA's. Were required by NFP to have one per riding position. So basically for every seat we have, then we have to have one SCBA. So that would replace what we have currently. We, we went for the grant and we went for what's called a regional grant, which is what they like to do. They like to give grants that will help larger areas than, than just one city, one township, that sort of thing. So we did ask for a regional grant. From, from, and I can't remember the exact number, but basically one of the biggest reasons we weren't awarded it is just because the amount of, uh, requests, the amount of monetary requests. Um, and so that's pretty much all they, they told us was they don't actually tell you, you didn't get it for X, Y, and Z reasons. But they said, um, you know, you weren't awarded and that there was, and like I said, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was a extraordinary amount of money was requested. And there just wasn't that much money. So, our chances of getting it, I don't know. Um, you know, there's, there's, uh, I think there was eight departments in the county that went in on the grant with us that are in the same position we're in of needing to replace their SCBA's. And, um, so that's why we went in as a, as a regional grant, but chances, I really don't know. Um, I, I will guarantee that there'll be probably as many or more people asking for money next year with COVID and, and situations people are in with, with that. Then asked this year, but we're definitely gonna try and, and see what we can do.
So this is something that we may have to do. I mean, it sounds like this is not even up for debate like this. Is this something that we have, like we absolutely have to do this coming year, no matter what?
That's, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't know if it's my OSHR, who, who, you know, oversees that, but is, I mean, is that an absolute necessity then?
So in my opinion, yes, absolutely. Um, it's a necessity to do it. And we're doing it because the, the company that does the flow testing on them and actually certifies them every year has told us that these need to be replaced. Because of their age and wear and tear on them. Um, that's the, that's the biggest thing is unfortunately they're fairly well-used. And, and when, when the, the guy that's actually testing them says these really need to be replaced. That's, you know, the only, the only person I have to go by is that person, uh, because he's the one that does the testing on them. So.
Eric, was there any, what kind of planning was done? With this kind of capital expenditure, I mean, you can't, you couldn't just anticipate getting a grant, obviously you've been trying to get it. So what kind of planning have, has the department done to prepare for from a budget standpoint per se, kind of the ambulance, how we, you know, we've gotten the two new ambulances now, so now we got a plan going forward to purchase a new one, once that one has wear and tear. So what, was there any planning with this? Because this is kind of a, a little bit of a shock to me because it's, it has to happen, but I guess I'm wondering, you know, with the quarter million dollar price tag, it's not a thermal imager per se. So why wasn't there any planning done for this capital investment? Cause obviously what you, you're telling us we had to pull out for, pull out of our fund balance or general fund. So was there any planning for this project or, 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 or for this SCBA's or, or is it something that was dropped? I mean, I'm, I'm just wanting some clarification on why are we here with this? Cause then you can't budget based on the potential of being a grant. So um, help me understand that if you would please.
Right. So these were actually bought with a grant fifteen years ago. Um, so we, we were given a grant. Um, and unfortunately SCBA's are something that you have to have a consistency. Somebody brought up, I don't remember who it was, and it might've been the mayor that it's not something we can buy five this year, five next year, five the year after. Because they're, they're the same and they change, unfortunately. It's kind of like a, a model year of a car. So each firefighter's, uh, issued their, their own mask. So our masks that we have that we use today won't work with the new ones. They don't hook up. They don't, they don't connect the same. So unfortunately it's something that, uh, it's not anything you can really buy. And our current ones were bought with a grant. So they were all bought the same year. Why or how? The budgeting, I know it has been listed on the, on the budget as in a future purchase for years, um, just because I went back and looked to see, to make sure it was, it was forecast that way. Why or how? I mean, is it something we could put money away in the future? Yeah. I mean, it's something that, that I could talk to Nathan about and say, hey, is how does the budget work type of thing? Because once again, we make this purchase this year and fifteen years from now, we're gonna say, hey, is there a grant out there? Who knows if there, if there will be? And are we able to get that grant? Uh, if so, or do we, do we save money for that purchase every year?
And I understand that. I guess my just knows, you know, if I, if I need a new roof on my house, four years down the road, I'm gonna start preparing now for that capital cost. So I guess, you know, it's, I, this is, I'm shooting the messenger because you were a chief back then. I, I'm gonna confuse on why, you know, with our big, because our big rigs, right? We have a plan, right? When it comes to replacing those vehicles. So something like this is a quarter million dollars. I don't see why this wasn't treated as, as the same, especially something this important for your guys. So, um, just maybe that's something you could look into with Nathan and find out how, how you can budget this going forward because that's a big price tag and it's something that the department has to have and we understand that, but um, again, it's not a ten thousand dollar thermal imager either. So we have to, um, I'm just very conservative with that when it comes to down the road, big capital purchases. So, but.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree. Excuse me, that, uh, I'm the same way. I mean, I in my own personal finances, I don't, you know, look at buying a big purchase. I, I save up for it. So not understanding exactly and, and it's something that, that, you know, I can talk to Nathan and, uh, administrator and say, hey, how do we look at this in the future? Cause I completely agree. It's a, it is a big expense and, and I mean, I can tell you, when I got in a fire service, you could buy an SCBA for about two thousand dollars, twenty-two hundred dollars. Now they're running about eight, nine, ten thousand dollars apiece. So, you know, that's over twenty-five years. That's a, that's a heck of an increase in, and it's, it's like anything else. It's because of, they've built more safety into them, but they also, they've also built more computers into them for the safety. But going from, from two thousand dollars to, you know, nine thousand dollars over twenty-five years is a, is a big expense. So absolutely. I, I completely agree. That's something we need to do to look towards the future. All right. Uh, moving on, this was a, a carryover from this current year that we took out, uh, due to COVID was the, the body armor um, for our, our firefighters and paramedics. Unfortunately, I, I've, I've covered it before. It's not anything that twenty-five years ago, I thought I would ever have to request, um, for firefighters. But unfortunately that's, that's the day and age we're, we're living in now. Of having to protect our firefighters. When I first got into the fire service, it was that we would, um, violent incidents, we would stage until the, the scene was completely secure by police department. And then we would go in and treat the victims. Um, unfortunately, um, the Columbine nightclub, or I'm sorry, the, the Columbine, Columbine school shooting, the Paltz nightclub. They found that, that people died because of that. Because they, they were trying to secure the scene and instead of going in and actually treating the victims in what we consider the warm zone with coverage from the police department, um, from PD. So this would give us that opportunity, uh, to, to have that protection, at least a, a level of protection for, uh, for our guys. We had the training actually back in January, just before COVID hit. How to operate with the police department. And we, we were in talks with the police department and, and the sheriff's department on working with them and doing joint trainings, uh, when COVID hit, um, and everything pretty much stopped on the, on the in-person trainings. But it is something that, um, we've had to borrow equipment twice now, once for the, uh, the barricaded gunman we had, uh, two years ago and then, uh, for the, the, uh, the, the protests this last summer, we had to borrow equipment from Bedford and, um, Cambridge Township. So that, that we had what we considered, uh, the equipment for our, our firefighter paramedics in case something were to happen. So this is where we put it back on, um, requesting that equipment. And, and unfortunately, uh, we do enter unsecure scenes. There's been some or not unsecure scene, but I consider warm scenes, warm zones, uh, just in the last couple of weeks where uh, there's been some drive-by shootings and we go in to treat the patients and we have no protective equipment if somebody were to, come back and, and try to do something. So that's our, uh, the reason for our request for the, for the equipment. So these would, we would carry on our, on our ambulances and, and on our lead engine. That way we'd have the equipment to, to actually have if needed. Questions on that? All right. Next one, uh, is the driveway repair. Uh, it was on last year's budget. Also, um, it's just deterioration. The station was built nineteen eighty-seven and salt and the heavy trucks that we have are creating some, uh, some issues with the concrete breaking up and spalling. Uh, we did have some sections in the front of the station that instead of replacing the concrete, uh, it was a lot more economical to actually just lift it because it wasn't in, in the shape of this, but it was, it was oh, raised in spots and, and dropped down. So we did have some repairs made. As it says last week, that's actually from, from last time I gave this presentation, um, last year, but so just some driver repairs to try and get, uh, the driveway back in shape. Um, then the last thing on that wa, is the, um, the chief's vehicle we've talked about. Talked about this last year, like I said, is to carry over from, from the year before. Estimating about sixty thousand dollars to, uh, do basically what they've done here and have an actual chief's vehicle with, uh, with the equipment, with a slide-out tray that we're able to, uh, put a cap on it to protect the equipment. And then also use it at fires to, bring equipment back to the station. Right now, like our SCBA's and, and a lot of the gear, we just shove into the cab of the. Shove into the cab of the trucks and with the, the studies done on, on, uh, the relevance of. Cancer in the fire service, we're trying to, um. Keep as much Carcia Jennings out of the cabs of the trucks until we can get it back to the station and cleaned. Um, which this would help with that to where we could load a lot of the equipment, the SCBA's and, and holes and stuff in this. Um, get it back to the, back to the station. So, um. The current vehicle was bought used, um, seventeen years old with over a hundred thousand miles on it, uh, when it was purchased. So, uh, one of my, my goals is to upgrade it to a, to a BLS, um, non-transfer unit. From an MFR unit, uh, and it'll just give more capacity to carry some equipment, uh, some more equipment than what's on it currently. So. That's, uh. That's that. Share my screen. All right. Questions on that, what I've covered so far? All right, looking at the, at the future, uh, not a whole lot of things on there, um, different. Uh, turnout gear every year, some fire hose, um. Not a whole lot. Uh, like I said, the, the thermal imager in twenty-five, twenty-six would be, uh, we're guessing that. That's about the time that our oldest one will need to be replaced. But other than that, not a, not a whole lot of, of big capital expenses. Um, until you get down to the capital vehicle expenses, um. As, as you know, the fire trucks are getting more expensive every year. And, um. So we try to keep on a schedule of every twenty years, replacing the engines. And every twenty-five years for the tower. And, um. So that would give us, uh, as you see here, uh, one, two ambulances and the next. Uh, in this projection, I'm sorry, two engines in the projection. Um. And then the ladder truck is about a million and a half, um, is our, our projection for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. That my hope is. As long as everything stays as planned, is instead of, uh, buying a new tower. We can refurbish it, which will hopefully be. Uh, this is a, a guesstimation about three hundred thousand dollars, um, as opposed to one point five million. But until we get to that point, that's still one, two, three, about four years away. We won't really know. What kind of shape it's in, um, and, and get it evaluated. Usually you get about ten or fifteen years more out of a vehicle or out of apparatus once, uh. Once we refurbish it. So that's gonna be our, our. Kind of what we look towards, but until we get there, we won't know exactly if that's gonna, if that's actually gonna happen or not. So.
Eric, I, I may just be crazy. Um, did you, I'm not seeing where you have the, is it in a different section where you have the vehicles? Cause I'm searching for that.
So that'll actually be in the motor vehicle pool. Uh, I put it on one spreadsheet to have it in front of me. Um. I don't know what page per se it's on.
It's listed in engineering.
So it is yours. I wondered if it was. I hadn't looked.
Okay. I was saying, I've got the book from last year, but.
I know I had seen it. I just couldn't re-find it. No, I didn't know where it was. Okay. Thank you. I was, I just couldn't find it. Sorry. I thought it was under fire and I knew I had already seen it in here.
So, yeah, and, and. S- you know, twenty years later, um, I, I've got the. The cost, what it costs for an engine, like say our last engine, engine three, which is gonna be up for replacement, um. In twenty twenty-two. That costs three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, a little over three hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, nineteen years ago and estimated cost is about almost double that. About six hundred thousand, a little over six hundred thousand. Um, Madison Township just bought pretty much the same thing. Um, they took delivery of it last year of six hundred and eighty thousand. Um. They have a little different because they, um. Have a, a more rural area than we have. So they did some different things. So. Without actually specing it out, I think it's a fairly decent number to say about six hundred thousand dollars, but. As you can see, there, there's a lot of, of money there needed to buy apparatus. Um, talking to the city mechanic. I asked him, I said, can we spread this out? Can we, um, you know, and unfortunately, um. The two things, one, the salt from our, our winter roads. Rust the, the chassis on them. Um, and, and engine three, our oldest one, Nick says it's, it's not where we have to take it out of service yet, but it does have some rust. Um, and there's that. And the other thing is, um. Just because of, a lot of it's because of the emissions and the computers is, um. The vehicles are not lasting. Uh, we've actually got two engines out of service right now. Um, one got towed to the, to the dealership today, um, trying to figure out what's wrong with it. And we've got another one that's, that's been out of service, trying to figure out what's wrong with the engine. So, um. And, and from, well, I don't know. You may or may not remember, while some of you actually weren't under commission yet, but, um. I think a week after I took over as, as the fire, actually interim fire chief. I was in front of you asking for money to, to, uh. Fix the fire trucks. So, um, that was engine one at the time, um, having a lot of issues. Now engine two and engine three are having inch, issues with the engine and the, the, the actual motor. Um, so. Unfortunately, that's, that's where we're at. But so that's the, the expenses we're looking at for the, um. For the capital equipment. Questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're almost completely on time, just in time for you, Matt. So. We are going to head on to Parks and Eng- does it, do we need to take a bathroom break? Are we okay? You tell me, commissioners. Good?
I'm good.
All right. So we're gonna head on to Parks and Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I, for the sake of time, I'm just gonna go over some of the, uh. The larger items, not really the items that we tend to, to budget for year after year. Um. So to start, uh, I'm looking at, um, cemetery. And so I'm gonna go off of the five-year plan. Uh, rather than the individual request, if that's all right with you guys, kind of just easier to, to follow, um, in my mind. Um, so starting at the top, I've got cemetery, um, looking to spend some money for asphalt maintenance. Um, usually I use, ask for about fifteen grand. Um. The road's not getting any better out there. Uh, so just looking to increase that number a little bit, just to, um, kind of catch up. Uh. I know in the years past, it's been, um. One of the first things that seems to be getting pushed aside, but I'm just trying to. Uh, get a, a little catch-up on it and so we can continue to maintain it, um, after this. So I'm asking for fifty thousand this year and fifty thousand next year. Um, hopefully I don't need all of that, but then after that, we should drop back down to just, uh, crack seal and seal coat. Um. They also looking for a utility cart for twenty-five grand. Um, they have a little truck out there right now. Um, I'm trying to help the motor vehicle pull out and take as much out as I can. Um, so we're just gonna replace that little truck with a, a smaller utility cart, um, with a blade on it and it'll be more versatile for them to use, um, on site. Um. Down in DPW, um, our scale, which we use to measure salt and stone and quantities for our projects, um, needs a couple of repairs and just. A routine maintenance. So I've, uh, put a little budget number in there for that. Um. Moving down to street lighting, I've got a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we've been on a kick to try to update as much as we can to LED. Um, trying to save some energy and save some cost. Um, this hundred thousand will get us roughly. Uh, a hundred streetlights in town, um, switched over to LED. We have roughly eight hundred streetlights. Um, so we're, it'll kind of be a prolonged process. Um, but we're at least trying to, to make a dent in it along the way. Um, moving down further, uh, nothing too much in parks. Um, so switching over to the next page. Um, I've got a request for pickleball courts at Riverside Park. Um, this was brought to my attention by a resident. And by a, a pickleball group in Laneway County that they don't have too many places to play. Uh, they wondered if, if the city was interested in putting any in, um. This, the suggested site was Riverside Park, uh, where the old ice rink was right next to Bone Pool. Um, I know there was talks about maybe bringing a nice ring back. Um, that is certainly very expensive. Um, but pickleball courts aren't cheap either apparently. Um, right now there's a budget on there for twenty grand. Uh, that was just an estimate. We've been getting, um, a couple of estimates throughout the last couple of weeks and it's looking more like a hundred grand. So. I don't know how, how much you guys wanna spend on pickleball courts. Um, but our plan was probably four pickleball courts and two tennis courts on that, uh, ice rink. That can be open for discussion. Um. We can move on to Heritage Park softball irrigation. Um, this is the last and the final. Field in, um, Heritage Park that needs irrigated. Um, so once we have that, I should stop asking for you guys. Last year we had in the budget plans for, uh, complex upgrades out there. Um, which included upgrading the concessions, the bathrooms, um, doing some grading and some concrete work out there. Um, that, I think that passed through the budget last year, but then COVID hit and it got removed. So. Um, that is back on the list here for you guys to review. We also took a, a look at the road out there. Um. My, I guess intention, my dream would be to base stabilize it and put over, or put on top, um, two to three inches of asphalt. Um, in order to do that, it's gonna cost about three hundred and fifty grand. And that's for the. The main road. So coming off of North Adrian Drive, um. So the start of Heritage Park, all the way down through the main trail, back to the Stubborn Center and then that loop back up. So that's, that's three hundred and fifty grand right there. Um, that doesn't take care of anything heading down towards the flying fields. Um, moving down to Major Street Fund, uh, there's a very large expenditure of one point two million from Michigan Ave. Um, we actually received a grant to help fund a large portion of that. Um, this, so the grant is for, um, Charles to. Charles to Water. Um, but we took a look at the, the rest of the stretch there and deemed that it could be repaired at the same time. Um, it'll probably save us some cost in the end, uh, as, as part of mobilization and whatnot. Um, but we should be, um. We shouldn't have to pay for more than half of that with that grant coming through. Um. Also planning to do a special assessment on River. Um. This is, so I guess next, this whole project is kind of one, a large project. There'll be River Street, uh, from. Maple to Springbrook, uh, Greenlee from Mommy to River in St. Joseph and Company. And then Summer and Cherry would all be done at the same time. Um, all streets are. Pretty low on our Paser rating, um, some lower than mo- some lower than others, but, uh, we could tackle the whole project as one. Um, it'll be a couple of different projects as far as, uh, base stabilization, reconstructing millinery surface. But we could tackle everything as one project and get a really good cost on asphalt. Um. Moving down to local, um, like I just mentioned, company St. Joseph, Summer and Cherry would also be. Um, a part of that, that larger project with River and Greenlee. Down to Harriet, uh, Kimblefield State, um, we're looking to ask for. Uh, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, if you guys remember, we. Took down the railroad ties along a large portion of Kuanis Trail and we replaced it with a stamped and colored concrete retaining wall. Uh, we'd look to do something similar over by the, uh, amphitheater. Um, a lot of the railroad ties over there are. Just falling apart, uh, dwindling away. Um, and it's, it's time that we, uh. Replace that with something more sturdy. Um, so I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollars there. Um, and there, there's another smaller wall, um, along the entrance of Trestle Park that that would be used for as well. Um. Flipping the page over, I don't know if, uh. If anyone has noticed on the north side of town, the welcome sign coming in, uh, has fallen over, um. DPW has graciously fixed that as, as much as possible. Um, we're getting estimates right now. This is just a placeholder, right? So. We're getting estimates to just replace the sign. Um, but if, if you guys would like to do so, if you guys want to replace the whole thing. Um, now is the time, unless you guys just want to get some numbers just to replace the sign itself. Um, insignia is working on giving us a cost, um, and we should get that back in the next couple of days. But it would only be for the sign itself, not for the entirety of the structure.
Are you talking about the one that's, uh, by plane wave?
Correct.
And I know there's a bunch of medallions, I guess, for lack of a better term on there from, it looks like service clubs that are active. Do they participate in that sign? Or, I mean, I think the colleges and the university have. Space on that, or, or is that just something that we do on their behalf? Or? Because I think that's pretty common amongst city signs, as I've driven around here, there and everywhere that you kind of. Publicize what you have in terms of service clubs and, and nonprofits or, or charitable organizations or schools, maybe. I don't know, but. A- any history on that? I mean, is that all ours?
From what I've, uh, come to know, it's all on ours. Uh, we kind of provide it to them. Um, but if you look at some of the conditional signs, it looks like a lot of them don't, um. Really maintain their sign well either. A lot of them are faded and you can't really read them. Uh, so it would kind of be an effort to. Remove the ones that aren't in use anymore and kind of update those as well.
I think it's time for an update. I mean, but, but the, the problem is, is in there one out by Gleaner as well. And. Is there another one someplace? But, um, I guess my point is, is that. I don't know if even all the organizations that are on those sides exist anymore. Um, you know, is it time to look at it that they can be. Updated accordingly, um, so that they, they can be maintained. To a standard or, or to an accuracy standard. You know, if somebody comes into town looking for, I don't know. Of coastmasters or something of, of past that doesn't exist anymore, but it's on our sign, you know, th- that's not the best thing. And, and there's gotta be modular signs that we could. Address that with. But anyways. I think the monument, I think the monument still is a, a very nice looking monument, driving by at forty miles an hour. But. I mean, you gotta tell us if the bricks need tuck pointed or the structure needs, needs to be rehabbed.
It does need tuck and grind it a little bit, but that's minimal. I mean, if, uh, if you guys like the sign, then we'll keep it and we'll just maintain it. That's not a problem at all. So I'll get some, I'm, I should be getting them any day now, but I'll get some quotes to just replace the sign itself. Um, and then we'll get that hopefully hung up. There might be a request coming in the next couple of weeks for a budget amendment. Um, to make that, to make that happen.
Matt, is, is this something that we need to start looking at though for the other sign in the future? Like, is it gonna have the same problem? So, something that should be five-year planned or, you know what I'm saying?
Sure. Yeah. Um, so the other sign is actually, um, made how, we're gonna make the new one. Um, the, the sign that has failed is made out of fiberglass. It's hollow on the inside and made out of fiberglass. Um, the other sign across from Gleaner is on an aluminum sign with stickers. So. That one's already up to date. It's just kind of fading. So, uh, depending on the price, I might come to you guys and say, hey, this is the cost for one sign. Um, but if we do two, they can look, um, they can look the same and they're fresh and ready to go. Um, so be on the lookout for that in the next couple of weeks.
And are we sure that we want to keep putting the, um, clubs, the volunteer associations on there? Is that, I don't know. I'm just asking.
I, you know, quite honestly, I've, in, since I've noticed the sign falling, I've been looking at a lot of newer signs that municipalities, municipalities put up. And it kind of seems like it's a thing of the past. I felt like I saw that on every other sign. But now it's, it's completely modern looking and I mean, that's completely up to you guys. There's, from what I found, there's no policy in place that says that we need to put every club member in town up on these signs. But we can certainly move the ones that are faded and gone or we can, it's completely up to you guys, I guess.
I think it's a good idea though to keep the colleges and university on there just because any college town you drive into that has one, usually that is on there. I mean, some of them, if they don't have that, they have like the name of the Chelsea Bulldogs, like their high school or whatever on there as well. But I just think especially with having, you know, so many visitors coming in for the, for the schools and us being such a college town that it is a good idea to leave them on. I, I, I kind of wonder about the service clubs, but yeah, I'm not, I don't, I don't really have an opinion either way.
I'd like the fact that the signs be the, be the same in uniform, both signs. Cause I think it's very important when you're coming into our jurisdiction to know that, that's the first thing you see. So that's one of those things where I would, I, I'd support spending a little extra money to make it pop from the road. Folks coming in our community to see that, you know, that this is a very nice, clean. And too much stuff on a sign becomes too messy, you know, but the college university, I, and even the high school, you know, home of Adrian Maples, you know, something like that, I think would be pretty cool. That's just my individual opinion.
Can you do some mockups like, or is there a place you can point us to look at some different options? Some really modern signs that clearly we've seen what we have, but is there a place to look?
I just went to Google Images and was just looking for a municipality entrance signs and you'll, you'll see quite a bit that way. Okay. Skipping over some of the, the annual request that I always ask for, we're going to go down to the parking fund. Then ask for another fifteen thousand dollars for another dumpster enclosure. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but the, the one behind City Hall is finally complete. And it's a stamped and colored brick and that's what we would look to do on the other side. The other side just seems to be falling apart. So we're going to try to take a proactive approach on it rather than a reactive approach like the other one. Continuing on, like Vince said, he's asking for two marked vehicles, that's nothing new, that is something that happens every year. Unfortunately, it's a ninety grand hit every year too. And then he's also asking for a used chief vehicle. We think we can get a, a good vehicle for under fifteen grand. That's going to replace the vehicle he has now. Going down to Public Works. There's two large expenditures coming out of there. It's one of our salt trucks or one ton dumps are due, due for an update. So we would sell that one and get a new one as well as one of our loaders that we use on all of our construction sites. We'd look to sell the other one off and use some of that money and get a new one as well.
Hey Matt, can we rewind for one second? Maybe more than a second. We talked about fire department, fire trucks once before when Chief was on the line. He kind of closed with, hey, we've got two offline right now. Is, is this worthy of a discussion that we consider purchasing a new fire engine this year? Or, or I mean, what are, what are the, I guess the commission's opinion or administration or anybody's opinion? Matt, your opinion, I don't know how familiar you are with the truck. But are, are, are we, are we at a spot where we really need to consider making another investment in, in fixed assets for, for the department?
I'll throw my opinion out there. The fire trucks are very, very expensive. And quite honestly, looking at the motor vehicle pool, it is terrifying to think that we have an expenditure next year of six hundred and six grand. And then in two years, another expenditure of one point five million. I have honestly been trying to push the most, most of the things back as much as possible, but all it's going to do is catch up to us in the end. If, if you're considering taking that six hundred and six grand and moving it forward, is that what you're saying, Brad?
Yeah, I am.
I, I don't know that we've had many issues with those trucks specifically. We always have issues with the, the diesel issues, whatever, the same issue we have on every other fire truck. But I can talk with Nick and Eric and see if it's, if it's worthy to move it up a year.
I mean, I struggle with it since we just bought them an ambulance, they want two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on breathing equipment. I mean, they're, they're capital intense, but I mean, we've got a, we've got a dark day looming on us in that area with, with the amount of cash that we need to outlay for that. Does this actually buy us some breathing room if we were to pull it ahead of you?
And, and I can, I'll check with Nick and Eric, but I don't know if it's going to buy us any breathing room. I mean, looking at the five year plan for fire alone is, is terrifying.
But my question, my question was like earlier, like I don't understand, like do we, do we plan for this? Or, or, or Brad, you seem to push it up, if two are in the shop, do we push it up forward a year just to, pretty much because it is public safety?
Well, well, it buys us some spacing in when we need to buy vehicles. I mean, we've got a five year plan with what, two point five million dollars worth of vehicles on it. And, and if we pull that up, that buys a year for the next, for five commissions from now of, of some spacing, if the useful life of each one of those trucks is the same. Man, it wouldn't it be nice to have to buy one of those every seven years? And you know, it's coming down the chute that every seven years you've got to buy an engine. And so it's a twenty one year cycle of buying engines rather than a five year cycle of buying three or four engines?
But I, I, I understand what Commissioner Halt was saying is have we been saving for these expenditures?
So, yes. The motor vehicle pool is one hectic spreadsheet. And I, and I, I think I found a mistake when I, when I first took a look at it. It was, we never planned for, for the rate of, of the increase rate over the years. So I don't think that was ever taken into account. We planned for the purchase price. So if we bought a truck five years, five years ago for five hundred thousand dollars, well, it was set to pay for, for that same truck in ten years, five hundred thousand dollars. Well, the price always goes up. And I don't think the, the increase rate was ever included in that, so.
Inflation wasn't calculated in.
Correct, correct. So now it's included, now we should start to see some of that money coming back. But it's going to take a lot of time. I mean, we're talking millions of dollars in the next couple of years. I've got, let me think here. So for fire on, on the, sorry, I'm trying to pull up my screen so I can.
It's okay.
So based on the commission's replacement policy that was instituted, I think in two thousand and twelve, we're supposed to keep these fire engines for so long. Any vehicle that goes in the motor vehicle pool falls, in motor vehicle, vehicle pool stays in for so long, depending on what kind of piece of equipment it is. According to my policy, according to that policy, he's got one fire truck next year, which is the, the six hundred and six thousand. And then he's got a, another fire truck in two thousand and twenty five, which is another six hundred thousand. And then that's it within that realm that was set by commission eight years ago. I don't have anything, so I don't, I, I think these are maybe towards the end of his life expectancy, but they're not towards the end of the commission's life expectancy, which is, it's hard to tell because I mean, I don't know where he gets his, his information from. But if he's got inspectors that are telling him, hey, this is coming up soon. We gotta, we gotta change this in the next two years. That's different than what we are supposed to follow based on what the commission approved eight years ago. If that makes sense. So I'm trying to find a happy medium, so what I'm trying to say.
Right, okay. It does make sense. So what we need to do is find out that one point five million dollar ladder truck. How, how old is it and does it fall within the two thousand and twelve commission guidelines of usage, correct?
And, and, okay, yes, that one does. And that's the one that's set for twenty, it's actually set for twenty twenty five. I said it was six hundred thousand, it's actually, it's double that. That, see, that's the purchase price, what we paid for it back then, but it's, it's well more than that now.
Okay, I think, I mean, that, that's a fantastic policy so in, in two thousand and twelve. But the reality is, is that we've got some trucks that seem like they might be liabilities right now. And, and, and you know, we're eight years off that policy, you know, Commissioner Valentine was, was very insightful on this. And, and he always seemed to enjoy the classic trucks that had the simple valves, no digital and these diesel computers that are nothing but trouble. But, but that's the reality that we're in right now. We do have fancy trucks and fancy knobs and fancy whistles and things like that. And maybe the policy that was set in twelve dealt with these classic trucks that worked forever in a day. But it's the reality that we're in, somewhere to the breathing things, doesn't sound like we have much choice and our backs are against the wall. But I don't know, I, I think we can all agree in some capacity, knock on wood, it doesn't happen. But man, if ours or our neighbor's house is on fire and both of our engines are sitting in, in the shop and we're borrowing one from Madison or, or Comcy or something like that. It's even longer for, before they show up. So I mean, I, that, that caught me off guard with a few trucks in the shop. And knowing the history of our quote unquote fancy diesel fire engines. Just, I just wanted to open up the discussion because I think it's a reality and, and, and we, we are in a healthy financial position. And so is this a good investment, not just an expenditure cash, but a good investment that might have long-term positive impact on the motor vehicle pool that has millions of dollars in five years?
And you're asking Matt's opinion, does he think that's going to give us some breathing room down the road the next two, three years?
Matt's opinion, your opinion, everybody's opinion, like, I mean, I don't know, I, I just wanted to have the discussion because it, it's a reality.
I mean, my thing is the, the safety of our community should be at the forefront of all of our thinking. And so if that is an issue where we are waiting, because we don't even have an engine that's available and we're waiting for it to come from another, you know, township or something like that. I, I do feel that we are putting ourselves, are putting our, you know, our citizens at risk and in a safety situation.
Well, I think, I mean, I think we turn it over to Matt, Greg and Eric to, to kind of look at that deeply as we move forward. And, and you know, unfortunately, again, not unfortunately, we have invested in two ambulances now in this and breathing gear, that's a lot of scratch we've outlaid, but boy, the burden is coming at us fast.
Yeah, and I, I think what, if I'm understanding what you're trying to say, Commissioner Watson, is if you look at the total for the outlay for those five years, if we could even that out some, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, put some spread in there, yeah.
Yeah, two hundred and thirty thousand for twenty three, twenty four versus almost two million for the next year. That doesn't, you know, that, that would be difficult to budget for, for anyone, including, you know, your own home. So I don't know if that's possible, but if we could figure out how to move some of those prospective purchases around, so we're getting an even outlay every year or reasonably even outlay, because I'm assuming that we're having a reasonable income into the motor pool fund every year. I mean, we're having a, an average, correct, Matt?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so if we have a, a similar amount going in and then a similar amount coming out each year, instead of having this huge, almost two million spike, that will be a lot easier for us all to, to live with in a budget for. I think if I'm understanding it correct.
Did I hear Chief right when he talked about it's like a three hundred dollar or three hundred thousand dollar engine repair or the one point five million dollar truck? Is that, did he say that about?
Yeah, it's a, it's a rebuild kind of thing on the ladder truck that has just come up or, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's been developed because my first year on the commission was like, hey, we gotta buy this and it's one point two at that point in time. And then just the discussion of a rebuild on whatever mechanisms are on it has been a new discussion.
Is it something that is, what, what are the, are they pretty sure on that anticipation? To make three hundred thousand dollar rebuild is a lot different than a one point five million dollar new truck too. So I, if we can buy a few years, that does spread a lot out. And is, I, I just wondered what their anticipation was of that, is it still in pretty good shape and that looks viable?
From my understanding, the truck is in, is great shape. It's just the motors getting old. So similar to any other truck, I mean, once your transmission goes, it goes and you, you put a new one in. So you still got the same structure, but you're taking probably a, a used motor or maybe even a new one. But I think it's definitely something that we need to consider.
Thank you everybody for backing up a little bit there.
Yeah, we can keep going further back if you guys have any other questions.
It's just alarming to see what's coming out of the pipeline, I'm, I'm just baffled, I'm like, whoa. Big money.
And, and unfortunately, it's one piece of equipment too. I mean, I, I'd love to be able to spread it out, but you just can't, it's one, one piece.
Yeah.
So moving out of motor vehicle pool into building space. Fire department is requesting fifty thousand for, to replace some of their overhead doors. They did a couple last year, but they're looking to do some more again this year. And then DPW is requesting twenty thousand to, to do a metal surround on their brick building. This will help with kind of preserving the, the concrete block underneath from the, from the weather. And that's, that's all I have for building space. So if anyone has any questions in regards to building space or anything else that we covered or anything else that you would like to see that I did not cover.
Can, can we go back to the pickleball courts? Did I understand you to say that the twenty thousand that you've estimated is not correct or not, not a good estimate? It's a hundred thousand.
Not a good estimate, that might get us, that might get us a half a pickleball court.
Okay, all right, so four courts for pickleball, two tennis is what a better, is a hundred thousand?
Roughly, yes.
Okay.
We have not gotten a formal quote, they just kind of keep saying, we need to get out there, but you can use this as a placeholder. So they said a hundred thousand would be close enough.
Wow.
Is there much of a demand for tennis courts? I mean, I don't even think Union High has a tennis team anymore, do they?
We do, there is a tennis team, but they play at Adrian College.
Okay.
And, and I think those are the only tennis courts in town. Country Club might have tennis courts.
Yeah, but they're in pretty rough shape.
Okay, well.
I, I guess I was just wondering what the demand was. I know that there's a demand for pickleball, but I just wondered about tennis. I just don't hear anybody talking about it.
Well, and I think the, the idea was it's both the same material and we have the space for it. This would cover the entirety of that concrete pad. So we can either use the, all of the pad and put four tennis court, or two tennis courts and four pickleball courts. Or we can use two thirds of the pad and put in four pickleball courts. I was just looking for, I guess, suggestions, trying to give a, I don't know, a good use for the pad that's just sitting there right now.
Am I understanding that pad's in decent shape?
It's decent, it's got some cracks in it, but I think it just needs It's decent, it's got some cracks in it, but, um, I think it just needs to be sealed up and, uh, um, I mean, tennis courts and pickleball courts usually use asphalt, so we need to put a thin layer over top of that and some seal.
And I'm assuming your number will come in with the appropriate fencing too. I mean, I'm assuming, we're not just, yeah, okay.
Yep.
I don't know, I see, I can see the tennis courts, uh, on a daily basis in, at Adrian College and um, it's quite a generous play by them, because there's a decent number of people that do use that facility, um, on, on an average day in the summer.
Are those people from the public or is it Adrian College?
It's both.
It's, there's a lot of public that uses Adrian College, because I know people that go out there all the time. I see their cars there. There's, there's quite a few from the public that use those.
Okay, I guess what I'm wondering is, are we already servicing the people who are in, interested in tennis? Through the college? And does, does Seattle have a, have tennis courts anymore?
No, no. I don't know. I, I don't know much about tennis, but like you, that, I, I know many people that have picked up pickleball and would really like to enjoy that in town.
When Adrian High pulled out their tennis courts, I thought that was sort of sending a message that number of people weren't playing as much anymore and, and it just sort of, there wasn't as much interest. And I, but I, I took it as it was sending us a message.
Well, um, my husband was the athletic director at that time when they got pulled out and the main reason, if I understand correctly, is that the cost of repairing them to a level that, uh, was safe to play was way more than the school system was interested in, in doing. So they were removed and that's when they made the agreement with Adrian College to play there. And there was low, um, enrollment in the boys tennis team. And so there was no men's tennis team for at least one year, if not two years, but the women's tennis team has never stopped being in existence, if I remember correctly.
Um, the men's team is growing a little bit too. I, there's a big push to grow it back, so they have grown over the last few years, not huge, but they have grown over the last few years in our plan at Adrian College.
Yeah.
I guess my point of the discussion is that if we're, if we're gonna serious about pickleball, we might as well throw the two tennis courts on the end of it. And, and, and use that space, because right now it's used like three times a year for a, a bone pool swim meet that parents park on it. Um, and then occasionally for sand volleyball pits, but a lot of times it's just sitting there a nice flat pad, so.
Yeah. I can't imagine it would cost a whole lot more to add the two tennis courts.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a question of whether or not we want the pickleball courts to begin with and, and I'm, I'm lukewarm on that matter.
There are a lot of people that play pickleball. I know that I've heard a number of people saying as soon as, they can't wait for the pickleball courts to get lined at, uh, at New Y to get going playing, because they haven't been able to play mostly because of COVID, but I mean, along these same lines, is Matt, is there any, uh, plan at all to fix up the two little league baseball fields at Island Park that got destroyed about a year ago?
Uh, down the hill? Are you talking on the right side? Yeah, it's actually.
What used to be the Maple League Field and the Cub League Field.
Oh, uh, yeah, it's, it's tricky, because it seems like once a year we always get a flood that rips those fields apart. Um, so we don't want to spend a whole bunch of money to invest in that one, the next year it's just gonna get taken away again, so we're trying to look at our drainage options. I mean, it's unfortunate that we built a park in the middle of a middle of a wall, right? Um, but that's, that's nature, so, um, we just have to look at our options and see if there's anything we can do to, uh, to kind of keep that water away, so it doesn't damage our fields too much.
And, and Matt, I know you and I were looking at, out at Island Park and stuff, looking at playground equipment, but we've looked at other parks um, last winter before COVID hit. Um, you know, the, we've received some complaints on like playground equipment being broken or not being there or being dangerous or whatnot, and do you have an estimate on like what things need repaired even when it comes to playground equipment? Because as we're looking at like pickleball courts, I'm also thinking, you know, I know that there's like areas where we've taken out a lot of playground equipment and not replaced it with anything because we couldn't afford to or, you know, things have been broken. So I'm just kind of curious on that.
Sure. Um, so actually in the, in this year's, this fiscal year's budget, we've got planned for twenty thousand dollars. Um, and in here, and the one that I'm asking for tonight is planned for another ten gr- uh, grand, so.
So it's going to that, it's going to that equipment?
Yeah, it'll go to any of the equipment that's broken or that we've taken down over the years and we need to replace, so.
I just want to throw my two cents in on the pickleball. I concur with Commissioner Watson, I'm, I'm lukewarm at best. Uh, Commissioner Strayer mentioned the New Y and the pickleball that'll be available out there. It's available at the center. It's available when this COVID thing passes. They play pickleball at the Piotr Center. Seems to me there's a number of places that they play it. I'm not sure throwing a hundred thousand dollars at something like this that may have limited use. Um, you know, for four or five months a year is really gonna be the wisest thing for us to do.
I mean, my thing's gonna come down to if it comes to breathing apparatus for the fire department or pickleball, I want the breathing apparatus. You know, I mean, that, I, I think it's gonna have to be prioritized for sure.
So I can't remember what the process looks like, um, but this kind of seems similar to the dog park. So what if you took something like this out of the oil trust fund? Just, just a thought. Unless there's other ideas out there. I don't, to me, I haven't heard of anything that's come through for this year yet.
I'm not opposed to taking it out of the oil trust fund. I guess I, I would like to hear more. Apparently Commissioner Goss knows more about where there are other pickleball courts, which I wasn't aware of. So if we have other courts available for city residents to use and we don't need to build courts, then why are we looking at it? You said you had someone contact you, Matt? Is that why?
There's, there's actually an organization in Lenawee County, the Pickleball, uh, of Lenawee Group. I can't remember what they're called, but they're a group, and they actually leave the county to go play pickleball, because there's nothing here. There's no outdoor, there's no outdoor courts. There is indoor courts, um, but they go, um, I think they said Pittsfield was the closest one. And Pittsfield is one of the contacts we've had and they're putting more in, because it's been such a hit.
So the, the, the thing that they want, they have access to pickleball courts, they just don't have access to outdoor.
Outdoor courts. They can play in the Piotr Center. We do have that, yes.
Okay.
As long as you're a certain age.
I would, uh, if it comes to oil money, I mean, I, I don't even talk about splash pad on Eastside Park for the last couple of years. We haven't really, uh, we went with the dog park last year, which I supported also. Um, if you ask me to pick one of the two, um, either in Dunlap Park or Parish Park, I'd prefer a splash pad this year for the capital project. That's something that we're gonna have to talk about down the road, but, um.
And that's something that's gonna be coming up, because, uh, the A three coalition actually has found out about a grant, but it won't be until next year they can even apply for it. But it's for that exact, it's like, it's like playground and like outdoor recreation and, and they're looking at a splash pad like in that grant, but they don't know how much they'll get, and that is something where they could be coming, you know, uh, D'Angelo and Habitat and, and that whole group could be coming to us and asking for that, so it is something to keep in mind. Um, they're applying for it in December of twenty twenty-one, because they found out about it too late this year. Um, so they are, he is working on a grant and getting that together and submitting it. You know, they might get the whole grant and they would pay for everything, but they might not and you know, it's, that is something to keep in mind that could be coming down the pipeline in the future.
Well, I know I talk fast, um, but if there's anything else that I missed over or, um, anything else you guys want for the clarification on, please feel free to call me, text me, email me, um, but I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Um, do I need, do we need a bathroom break before we go on to utilities or do you want to go on? I'm just making sure for everyone.
I don't know. How long is Will gonna talk?
As long as you need me to talk.
Okay, five minutes, go.
We don't need that here anymore, we can read.
Actually, Will, I want to know how you drew the short stick to get last, like, are, does Nathan not like you? Nathan Owen not like you or what here?
You always save the best for last.
So we will go ahead and are we good then to go on?
Yeah.
Okay, great, we're going on. Utilities, go ahead, Will.
Alright, so earlier today I emailed everybody kind of a summary of what's in next year's budget. Um, there's nothing in what I sent you that's not in the book. It's just kind of presented a little bit differently and kind of grouped together. So on the first page of what I sent you is what I consider annual allocations of funds for things that we spend every year. And there's quite a diff- quite a few different categories in there. Um, so the first page is on, in the sewer fund and it's broken down between the wastewater plant and then our collection system. So looking at the few things that the, anything that's in red is a dollar amount that's different than normal. So for example, in major lab equipment, we normally budget five to ten thousand dollars. But we're gonna need to replace a spectrophotometer in the wastewater treatment plant lab. And we ex- estimate that cost is gonna be about thirty thousand dollars and it's gonna replace, um, that piece of equipment that was purchased in two thousand and three. So it's definitely reached its lifespan. Um, and in terms of replacing valves, um, we, we typically budget about fifteen thousand dollars a year. But we have some larger valves that need to be replaced. And the cost of valves, depending on the type and the size, can range anywhere from four hundred dollars to twenty thousand dollars, depending on the size and, and the type of valve that you're buying. And then for miscellaneous structural repairs, we typically budget ten to fifteen thousand dollars. But we have been having quite a bit of concrete, um, issues, both inside and outside of the buildings out there. As you can imagine, the environment out there at the plant is quite corrosive and it, and, and the atmosphere really, really attacks the concrete out there, so, so we, we kind of bump that up for the current fiscal year and for the next fiscal year. Um, to try to get some of those repairs made before it gets too bad. Um, in terms of the collection system, which is all the sanitary sewer, those numbers are typical numbers that I plug in every single year. Um, and it's mostly, the big numbers are really for sewer rehab projects. So the, the Karen, the Karen Place lining project and then the Manhole lining projects were the two big dollar items. And again, the cost for, for lining sewers can, can vary from size. You know, it can be thirty dollars a foot, all the way up to three hundred and fifty dollars a foot, depending on the size of the sewer that we're lining. Most of our sewer is eight or ten inch sewer, so we're typically on the, on the low end of the per foot cost, so we can get a lot of work done. And what I like to do is actually budget, um, two years and, and do one project every two years. So in two thousand nineteen, we did, we used two years worth of funds to do one project and that project ended up being uh, around eight hundred thousand dollars, but it, it took two different years of, um, budget money to do that. And the reason for doing that is projects like this often have mobilization costs. And those costs are fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, just to get, you know, crews onsite and equipment onsite and product onsite. Why pay that twice when you can pay it one time for one larger project? So the money, so right now, we, we did a project in two thousand and nineteen. So my goal is next summer to do another project, so we'll use the money that we put in for the current year, which is twenty twenty-one. And then I'll combine it with these, these funds to do a larger project next summer and next fall. That makes sense. Um, but again, those, those numbers are pretty much, um, I like to try to keep those as consistent as possible. Um, on page two are some items that are, that are different from year to year. So at the wastewater plant, we've got some older handrail that we need to replace, so I budgeted about ten thousand dollars in there. Um, parts of the wastewater plant date back to the late twenties, early thirties and standards were different back then. Um, and again, with that, with the corrosive environment, the, the current handrail is just in bad shape, so we like to replace a little bit every few years to get it up to, to modern standards and to my ocean safety standards. And we have a lawnmower out there that we need to replace and the one that's, the one that's replacing is from two thousand and two. So we got a good twenty years out of that lawnmower. Um, so we figured it'd be about twelve thousand dollars to replace that. And then in the collection system, we have, um, a tandem axle dump truck that we need to replace and this money will be paired with money in the water fund side to get a replacement truck. So we're figuring it's gonna be somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars to replace that truck. And what we're doing is we're actually getting rid of an, a smaller dump truck, a one-ton dump truck, so that we can purchase a second tandem axle truck. Um, to help out with some of the larger projects that we do. Um, and that dump truck that we're replacing was purchased in two thousand. Um, in terms of capital projects at the wastewater plant in the filter building is one, is almost the last stop in the treatment process. And we need to start thinking about replacing the filter media, which is varying layers of sand and anthracite coal that filters out to kind of finishes the, finishes the water before it heads to the, to the UV building for discharge into the river. The current media was put in in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, and it's typically got about a twenty-year lifespan. And you, you can tell when it starts going bad, because the quality of our effluent degrades a little bit. You get some kind of biological growth inside those filters that just can't be cleaned anymore. So that's, and we've been noticing that a little bit of degradation in the hot weather months the last couple of years. That's really pointing us to, that we need to start getting this done, so. The plan was to budget a hundred thousand dollars this year and a hundred thousand dollars next year. And then complete the project in the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, budget year. Um, grip building, motor control center panel, that's the main power source or the main power box. There's two of them actually in that building and that is the most corrosive environment building on site. And that is rusting pretty bad, so we're trying to build up a little bit of fund balance, a little bit of money, um, to replace that. I'm guessing it's gonna be somewhere in the hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollar range to replace those. So we had money in the, but we're gonna put money in the budget for the next couple of years to try to get that replaced. And then on the, the main switchgear in the plant is where both main power feeds come into the plant and then gets divided out to all the buildings. Um, again, this is just, you know, kind of going back to Alan's point earlier was start saving money and building up some money to do a bigger project or buy, buy stuff later. And I'm guessing this replacement is probably gonna be in the million dollar range. And it was, uh, installed in nineteen eighty when the plant went through a major upgrade. And the expected lifespan was thirty-five years, so we're actually beyond the expected lifespan. But we have done a lot of maintenance and preventive maintenance to that piece of equipment. So it is still in pretty good shape, but it is kind of antiquated equipment. So the plan is to, is to kind of, uh, put a little bit of money aside every year. Um, and then do a big project down the road in a little bit. So that kind of wraps up the sewer fund. Um, does anybody have any questions on those items? Nothing in there that's out of the ordinary from what we normally do. Alright, on page three, starts the water fund. And again, I've got this kind of divided into page three being what I call annual allocations and then the right items are items that are different. Um, for meter replacement, obviously Johnson Controls is going through a major meter replacement project and starting in probably about February, that should last the most of next year. Typically, I would budget a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to replace meters. We won't need to do that anymore, but we still need to put a little bit of money in there, because we know that, um, new buildings are gonna be built, you know, people are gonna need bigger meters. So we're gonna still have to be able to purchase some meters and have some funds available to purchase meters. Um, so I was able to reduce that, um, down quite significantly. Another great, uh, thing that we do, you know, elevated tank maintenance, we budget, we try to put thirty-five thousand dollars a year in the budget. Again, this is just trying to save money to do a big project. We have three tanks, two elevated tanks and one ground storage tank. So we initially had, we basically have six surfaces that need to have special coating put on them every so often. And one project, you know, could be 175,000 dollars to actually paint one of these water tanks. If we have to sandblast one, you can double that cost. Industry standard only allows for so many, so many coats of this epoxy paint before you have to remove it. So I believe the next tank in line, I think, is the exterior of the fairgrounds tank will have to be done next, I believe. Instrumentation and control, we typically budget about $10,000 a year. Next year, I want to put 35,000 in there. We've got a couple pieces of equipment that's starting to show their age. Instrumentation and control are basically the, the computer behind some of the equipment that we use. Page four is things that are, a lot of times are in there, but sometimes not rebuild and replace or repair the high service pumps. We have five of them at the water treatment plant. One is actually getting replaced in the Johnson Controls project. The other ones, we don't need to replace, but we like to budget some money just in case there's a repair that needs to be, to be made to one of them. The same thing at the West Side Pump Station out on Industrial Drive. There's three pumps out there. So we like to have a little bit of money to, in case there's something happens. Sump pump replacement, that $5,000 will actually replace two sump pumps and the controller in the basement of the water treatment plant. And then we have a large flow meter that's going to need to be replaced sometime soon. And then there's the other half of the tandem axle dump truck. Capital projects to water treatment plant, Lake Adrian bank stabilization. We've been putting money in there every year, trying to again, build up some, some money to do a larger project. We could do it piecemeal if we wanted to. For those of you that you know, kind of know what the bank looks like near the dam, it's just a bunch of concrete blocks that are just tossed out there to keep that base stable. It's unsightly and Eagle doesn't like it. They've commented on it in the past. They haven't forced us to do anything about it, but if they wanted to, they could. So we want to try, start taking care of that. Again, some handrail replacement there at the plant. Dam repairs is just concrete. There's concrete, the spalling of the concrete around the dam, both at Lake Adrian and at Springville Highway that we're going to start, you know, doing some work on every year. Distribution system, again, these are numbers for water main replacement, $400,000 seems like a big number. But honestly, if I was to bid out a project to replace eight inches of main, I'd only get about half a mile for $400,000. So it's not very much. We try to do as much as we can in-house to save, save some money. And in the last year and a half in-house, we've been able to do. Let's see, we did mommy court last fall. We did part of Law Avenue this year. We did the 100 block of East Hunt Street this year. And we're just finishing up the, putting in a 16 inch main on Addison Street. And we've discovered that 16 inch, while we can do that, it really pushes our limits. The Addison Street main was done basically because the main on that road is undersized and there was already a 16 inch main that ran from Santa Heights down to Mulberry. So what we wanted to do was in order to get rid of that other main, that undersized main was to extend that 16 inch down to the actual water tower. So that'll help flow in that area. The main on Addison Street, I know there's been some comments about how that's been leaking for many, many years and that's just not true. In fact, we just installed that 16 inch water main right next to it and didn't run across any water in the street. So actually went very smoothly. Hydrant additions and replacements, always put about $25,000 in there to, to replace some of the old hydrants. Obviously, we have an older system and some of the hydrants are quite old. And replacing one costs us about $2,000 for the parts and then just we can install them ourselves. And then service line renewals, I, I mentioned this last year with the lead and copper rules requiring that we replace all the old lead services or what they consider to be partial services. So we don't have any known complete lead services in the city. The city over the last many decades has actually done a really good job of replacing the city owned portion, which is the portion from the water main to the curb box, which is in the Boulevard area. Over the years, the city has replaced those from, gone from galvanized to either plastic or copper. The thing that we're going to really need to start replacing is from the curb box into the house. And that's where it gets a little bit tricky. So the lead and copper rule says that we have to replace 5% annually. So that equates to us somewhere between 150 and 200 services a year. I can't give you an exact number because it's kind of a moving target. We did our initial inventory and turned that in in December of 2019. But it wasn't what's considered a complete inventory because all we did was we just used, it's called a desktop inventory. We just used the records that we had and the knowledge that we had from personnel to estimate where the services were. Over the next four years, we actually have to lay eyes on every single service. So one thing that's good about the Johnson Controls project is they're going to be in almost every single house, either replacing a meter or putting an endpoint, the meter reading device on the existing meter. And they're going to know what material is coming into that house. So they can let me know if it's copper, plastic or galvanized. So that's a nice, easy way for us to do, to do, do a more thorough inventory. So as that inventory gets more thorough, I can have a better number of how many replaces we have to do a year. But right now I'm estimating between 150 and 200. Those replacements actually have to, are required to start in 2021. We've actually got a head start on that. And we've already done probably 50 or so. But I'm guessing it's probably going to average 2,000, $2,500 per, per service as we move forward. And we're probably going to be in the neighborhood of 3,000 that we have to replace in the next 20 years. So the math on that puts us, you know, six to eight million dollars would be a pretty good, pretty good guess in the next 20 years. So that was me talking kind of fast. Anybody have any questions?
I got a question. Well, so looking at the 2022, just looking at the book. Like 60,000 and I, I understand your funds different than general fund. You have your own utility fund, right? So when you have a vacuum truck for 60,000, is, are you just preparing for, you know, it's a half million dollars at that truck?
Right. Well, it depends on if we want to purchase it outright or do another lease. So if we do a lease, we can break that payment down over the course of five or six years. But if we're in a good enough situation to where we can purchase it outright, I would rather just bid it out or go through a MyDeal program and just buy it. But you know, we'll have a better idea as we get closer to the time that needs to be replaced.
Got you. But you're prepared. My, my point is you're, and I understand it's different asking, cheap asking you to prepare for something that is general fund based as where you have your, uses based on rates. So, but the preparation for that big capital product or that big capital investment being prepared for. That's why I thought we always done that. Like, but I'm not talking about your department, other departments, but I always want to point out that you are prepared for that big capital purchase. So.
Yep, absolutely. So just kind of looking ahead at the five year program, there's nothing in there that's super crazy. Obviously, as you mentioned, you know, that we, we, we have two backer trucks right now. One of them was purchased in 2017, 16? 2016, I believe. The other one was 2005 or 2006. So we like to have two on hand. So we're going to, we're preparing to get another one here in the next couple of years. And then just looking at the wastewater plant and specifically, there's a di, there's a digester lid that's, it doesn't do us any good. It's, it's just, it doesn't hold gas anymore. We're going to need to do something with that. So we're trying to, again, tuck away a little bit of money. So that starts in 22, 23. And then it seems like, oh yeah, a couple of blowers that are getting up there in age. So I've got $150,000 in 22, 23 through 24, 25. And then a headwork screen, which is at the, at the head of the plant where the flow comes into the plant. That is what takes out a lot of the larger debris that gets into the wastewater flow. One thing that is kind of positive looking forward is in 2023, the first of our loans fall off. So on the sewer side, in October of 2023, we make our final payment, which is $560,000 a year for that. That's our largest sewer loan. And on the water side, October of 2023, we have one of our loans falling off, which is $355,000 annual payment on that. So that's a good thing. Chances are by then we'll have another project to kind of slide into the place of that. And honestly, our plants are in pretty good shape. I think we need to look more at collections and distribution system, water mains and sewers. We probably need to spend a little bit of time and money concentrating on those for a while. Any questions?
I have one quick question about you said, oh, JCI and they're going to, will they actually be inside every single home? Or will they, okay, because they have to go downstairs and look at my actual water meter and do something to it.
Right. So if you have a water meter that has not been replaced in the last five years, you will be getting a new water meter. If you have an older water meter, you're going to be getting an endpoint. And I don't exactly know what that thing looks like. But it's actually the device that will attach to the, your current water meter that will send the signal to our automatic metering system. So at some point, they're going to have to lay eyes on every single meter. Yes.
Thank you. And with that water meter replacement, we're going to see some savings to the city. Is my understanding of the JCI contract, correct?
Yeah. So the savings, you, you know, you hate to tell people that their bills are going to go up, but the reality is that they're going to be, it's going to be more accurate. So when they, when they did a sample of the smaller sized meters, they found that those meters were reading about 20% low. And that happens when you get old meters, they slow down. And the meters that we use now are the mutating disc meters. So there's a moving part in there and that will eventually wear. So even with their, their margin of error, the, the, the reading of those meters was only like 88% accurate. So the reality is people have been using more water than they're paying for. Not everybody, but a lot of the older meters. So the savings is really going to come in, in the fact that we're probably going to generate a little bit more revenue from this. The, we're not going to have to have a meter reader anymore. You know, the, the meters are going to, the readings are going to be more accurate. We're never going to have to do estimated reads anymore. It's just going to be, it's going to be easier. The also, the other thing with this is some of the meters that we're going to be putting in place actually have an automatic shut off feature. So we can literally shut off someone's water right from the computer instead of sending somebody out there to shut it off. Now, those meters are more expensive, so we would never put those on every single house. Because the reality is most houses, most residences always pay their water bill and are never threatened to be shut off. And probably their shut off valve probably hasn't turned in 50 years. But we do have a lot of properties that are rental and people move in and out all the time. So we're constantly sending people out, someone out to turn water off, turn water on. So we're going to concentrate these meters on places like that to where we can just click a button and turn them on and off.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you. I'm not hearing any more discussion, Will. So I think that we are done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Can I put my two cents in on the motor vehicle pool? Man, that's, that thing's a nightmare.
Tell me about it.
You know, and I'll be honest with you. I'm just going to bring this up because years ago, it was suggested that utilities department be put in the motor vehicle pool. And that would cost utilities department tons of money. And he, and here's why. So, you know, we have trucks that are, that are being used by, by our employees. Let's say, for example, you know, every one of our foreman, every one of our superintendents has, has a truck. Well, they're using those trucks 2,000 hours a year, right? And we're, we would have to pay a rental rate on those of, what's your rental rate on a pickup truck, Matt? $10 an hour. So we would literally be paying $20,000 a year for a pickup truck. And we're expected to keep that truck for 15 years. So several years ago, we've been out a pickup truck and paid $28,000 for that truck. If we were in the motor vehicle pool, we would have paid $300,000 for that same truck.
So I'll let utilities take the motor vehicle then.
Nope. That's why I'm saying the formula, I just, I don't understand it. I don't know how you do it.
It doesn't make any sense, but I'm trying to find a solution that makes a whole lot more sense than that. But the state requires us to use a formula of this, of that. So there's got to be some, something better.
But it's just, it's like I said, $20,000. I mean, in one department, I might have eight trucks, you know, or not that many. I would have four, four pickup trucks. That's $80,000 a year. You know, again, for a truck that I bit out and paid $28,000 and I won't have to bid out another truck for 15 years. So it just, it just, it's a nightmare. Sorry.
So what the formula that we're using currently, if I'm understanding you, Matt, is required by the state? Is that what you said?
Yes. So we have to submit hourly reports up to the state of what we, what, let me think about this. We have to submit our hourly rates each year to the state on what, what equipment we have. So actually, we just got our packet from the state last week and we have to turn around and send everything, every piece of our equipment to them and say, this is what we charge per equipment. I don't know that they, I don't know that they track all of our hours. I think the hours that we track are all done internally and I don't know that they care about how many hours we. So I'm trying to, I guess, find a better plan that we can track our hours, but not charge by those hours and make the state happy.
Matt, let me ask you a question on a, on a different note. I've had people suggest to me that the increased mileage from to go round tripped out to the new hospital was going to shorten the useful life of our ambulances. Given the fact that there's more mileage. Is, you have any thoughts on that?
We're getting more money though, aren't we? We're going for traveling further.
Well, that, that may be. I'm just talking about replacement, the replacement of the ambulances because we've shortened the useful life potentially. Because they're going to wear out faster.
But the, but the interesting thing too, and I know nothing about mechanics or anything like that is, is that, you know, that we talk, we've talked about it before. Is that it's good for a diesel motor to get up and run. And so, I mean, is it, is it actually going to be healthy for our engines to be exercised to run that six miles out there at 45 miles an hour versus just doodling around town at 25?
But are the ambulances diesel? I thought they were gas.
Just spitballing ideas, Gordon.
I'm sorry, Brad. I'll buy you lunch when the restaurant's open.
Pizza and donuts. We're going for pizza and donuts, Gordon.
Okay, I'll get you a slice of that New York Biggie stuff. No, I saw, I, I mean, I don't know. I'm not a mechanical guy like Brad's not a mechanical guy. But I mean, there does seem to be some, some logic to the fact that you're going to run up more miles. And, you know, potentially shorten the useful life. I, I, I don't know.
I think you, I think you could, but I mean, you're adding two more miles for every time you take a trip out there. I don't see that it's going to be that hazardous. I, I don't know.
I don't understand the two miles. I mean, I did a ride along with the fire department a year and a half ago or so. 24 hour shift, we made seven, well, we had 22 runs, 17 of them, we went to Bixby Hospital from the fire station or from the local residents here in the city. And now we're going to be going out to M52. That would seem to be a further, unless you're telling me that the new hospital is only a mile further than the old hospital was.
Well, it, it's actually six miles. It's six miles to the center of town.
Each way?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So each, each trip is going to be 12 miles longer. And over the course of a year, I mean, And over the course of a year, I mean, if you're doing fifteen trips, round trips a day, I, again, I don't know the answer. I'm just. You're the, you're the vehicle guy. So I'm just throwing it out there, you know, is there. You know, if we right now think we've got an ambulance, it's got a ten year life or we're going to shorten it to eight years because of the increased mileage. I don't, and I don't know.
And I guess I don't know that either. I've just, like, kind of going off of Brad, Brad was saying. It's not good to always turn your vehicle on, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off. So now that you're actually getting some drive time to them, it might work out some of the, the buildup in the system. Because I mean, when you keep turning them on and turning them off, all that exhaust just builds up. But if you let it run for a little bit, which, well, I don't know, because they usually let them run when they're on site anyway. So.
What's the point in the discussion? We can't move the hospital at this point in time.
Well, no, I just want to know if we need to plan for replacing ambulances sooner. That's all.
Good point. Good point. Yeah, okay.
We'll let that one rest for.
Well, I think we're, we're on a plan for every five years, we'll have a new ambulance and they're lasting fifteen years is the plan. I think that's what the plan was with the, the new purchase.
Okay, thank you.
According to former Mayor Jacobson, he tells me that we're going to be getting more money because based on billing that. We're traveling farther. So we should be able to use that money if we have to back it down six months, eight months from the original plan, but.
I want to say mileage is a component of that. As they analyze that, I want to say they got like three bucks a mile or so. I mean, it's a big reimbursement per mile. Compared to what you and I can get legally from the IRS.
If you go from going two miles round trip from anywhere in town essentially, then going twelve, I mean, we're going to be making some more money. You know, per trip, you would think. So we'll be able to back that down. This is all, this is all Chuck's telling me all this and he's. He dealt with Barton Slager and then, uh, you know, when they were talking to us and they're drafting all this up. So.
Well, you do realize Chuck is competing with us for ratings tonight. While we're doing this, he's having his online jewelry sale.
Seven thirty, we got.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Joanne's getting something nice for Christmas this year.
Don't count on it. Got me. What more does she need?
Oh my God, can I throw up right now?
All the stuff you've been posting about anniversaries and lovey dovey stuff and pictures of weddings. Come on, Commissioner.
My, and I are so cute, aren't we?
Love you. There's no doubt.
Other discussion about anything from tonight that we, we want to discuss before I go to public comment? Nope. All right. So moving ahead. Now it is time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no public comment, I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments?
I, I would just like to kind of explain maybe a little bit because. I'm not sure Commissioner Castleberry understands what exactly we did tonight. I don't know. What are you, Kelly, do you need any more explanation? Are you still there, Kelly?
You're on mute, Kelly. Did get to take the municipality's class on budgets last Wednesday. So it helped explain a lot. So yeah, I, I, a little bit, I've probably got a. Little bit of learning left to do, but. Yeah.
This is essentially their wish list of what they want to have happen over the next five years. And it was kind of for them to feel us out to see if we thought we could or should be doing these things. So now they have to go back and figure out how, how are they going to put it in their budget or our budget to pay for it.
I was pretty impressed with. The. How Will has budgeted out. So that's, that's good. I choked down a little bit of a fire truck expense.
Yeah, usually we just all tell them all no.
I was a firefighter in the Navy, so I am crazy impressed with that nifty firefighting image. Thermal imager, we call them a nifty. I don't know, but they've come a long way in twenty some years.
Yeah. Well, good. I just remember two years ago, this was my very first meeting and when, what did we just do?
I was actually in Naples last year, so I missed this meeting and I, and so I've been, I was a year off. So. I wish I was there right now, but this was fun. This was fun.
Well, it teaches, it teaches you a lot about the city, just going over that.
As painful as it is, it's, it's an important part of our jobs, obviously. And I'd last, also like to thank Will, the. The amended sheets that you sent us today, I thought were very helpful in, in helping us really narrow down and look at the stuff that we need to look at. And not spend a whole lot of time having to do it. It was, it was, it was very well done. Thank you.
You're welcome. I would have liked to put some pictures in there, but. If the file was too big to send, so, but you guys are always invited out to tour all the facilities, anytime of the day, any day of the week.
I know. I need to do that. I haven't yet, but I need to.
I think it'll be eye opening.
I just said that today as well. And then I heard if you go on a tour with Will, you get the real tour, like you see all the wells, you see it all. That you really like being the tour guide. I, I was told that today. So I, I really need to schedule that. Maybe Mary and I can schedule that together.
That would be good. I'd like that.
Let me know.
Any other commissioner comments? May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yep. Thank you.